Still planning on doing that this summer.
No ports probably for the first cruise, um, so just going to float around for thirty days. Uh, but they are gonna go cruise and then, um, do another cruise in July. We gotta get kids caught up where we got kids that are getting close to two years behind, so we better get them caught up.
Yeah, that's a lot better than being at the dock.
Yes, exactly.
You do need to tie up, come to Buck Sport, not just here.
I, 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 I mentioned that, I mentioned that to him, so it's still, it's still a possibility for sure. All right, I'd like to call the board of town council meeting for, uh, Thursday, February eleventh, roll call Jake.
Council Eastman.
President.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Bisnet.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Council Ormsby.
Here.
Council Downs.
Here.
And Council Rankin.
Here.
Next item was presentation of any town council recognitions, I don't believe we have any. Item four is consider minutes of previous meetings, we have town council minutes from one twenty-eight, twenty-one. And town council goals, objective meeting minutes from two, four, twenty-one, how would council like to proceed?
Second.
A motion from Paul, a second from Kathy. Jake.
Council Eastman.
Approve.
Council Morrison.
Accept.
Deputy Mayor Bisnet.
Approve.
Mayor Stewart.
Approve.
Council Ormsby.
Approve.
Council Downs.
Approve.
Council Rankin.
Approve. Receive and review correspondence is the next item, I don't believe we have any of that. Um, item six ordinances considered introduced, there are none. Item seven is discussion items, the first is twenty-seven Main Street. You're still muted Sue.
My apologies, um, the the last meeting, um, you got information that the infrastructure committee had heard and there was discussion about, um, again, at our, uh, goals and objectives session that, uh, it would be helpful for example if we had a better idea data-wise for what housing was needed as opposed to anecdotally and that a housing study would be a good idea. Um, since that last meeting, um, Jason Bird from Penquess has talked to Luke and is looking at two other sites in Buck Sport, um, that are not the one on Main Street, one of them is, um, up, um, the wall property before you get to Nicholson Avenue that goes up and back, the house that was torn down. And that property goes up a good distance back and, um, actually is, could be accessed by a right-of-way that the town owns off Nicholson Avenue that was part of a, the once upon a time access to the paper street that we gave away or that we said we were never gonna do because it went up to the back of Wendell and went nowhere. And so the, one of the questions that Mr. Bird had was if they were to look at that site as a location for this kind of housing, would the town be willing to sell or give up that, that right-of-way, that ownership right-of-way of that seventy feet wide off from Nicholson to be in access because, um, another curb cutoff through one would be very difficult with DOT. They're pretty stingy with those and it's not likely to happen, but a seventy-foot entrance exit there would, oh, would be, would work for, um, that kind of a project. And, um, might be a good location, it's walkable from Hanaford, I mean, it's not in town, but it's close to the grocery store or as close as anything is, um, that, um, but without the idea that the town would be willing to give that as an access, they wouldn't be able to do that, likely be able to do a project there because of the access off Route One issues, um. So this is all really related to twenty-seven Main Street because they had made a request to the town for an option on that and, um, if the town moves forward with a housing study, that's going to extend your decision process to a point that it makes it beyond feasible for Penquess to consider that housing at the twenty-seven Main Street location. If they, um, have a option on a private piece of land and are doing the housing study in conjunction with other information that they're doing, they stay on a timeline that they could still make a project happen here in Buck Sport. The, um, and that would leave, uh, but he also said that if they did that, that if the town wanted a more comprehensive housing study, that they could piggyback with Penquess and just add to the consultant additional kinds of housing that the town wanted evaluated, not just the kind that they would be looking at for that particular proposal. So, and then finally, you got an email today, I believe I forwarded it to all of you from Mary Jane Bush expressing concern about, about not having housing on the twenty-seven, not necessarily Penquess, I don't think, but, but that that housing for accessibility purposes for seniors, that that would be a good location. But tonight, I guess the question is, one is if the council would consider allowing, uh, giving up that easement from Nichols, that we have from Nicholson to that doesn't go to anything that we have anymore, uh, in order to allow that housing project to be considered. And the second is whether, if you did that, that you would want to piggyback on a housing study to have better data on what overall the needs are for housing in Buck Sport.
Questions? Ed?
Um, not so much a question, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, I think I'm more inclined to, uh, you know, give that right-of-way up. The more I think about this, I, I don't think either proposal we got for twenty-seven Maine, I don't, personally don't think it's what we're looking for. They're both very much appreciated and good proposals, but I, I I don't wanna see the town spend potentially another ten thousand for Mr. Gordon's proposal. And in the same sense, I don't think that a big housing, you know, development right there on Main Street is exactly what the, where we're trying to go with Main Street. That's my opinion, but I'd be a lot more inclined to go with the, giving them a right-of-way to go against the wall property.
Danny?
Sue, what would be the reason not to give the easement up? Is there a reason not to?
Well, I don't, I don't know what we would use it for, we, the paper street that that was supposed to connect to, we discussed some time ago that, that we eliminated that because it wa, it went to Wendell. Wendell had got put between it and Miles Lane and, and that was the original intent of that paper street was to connect to, well, that's not possible, and so that's gone, and so it's another one of these pieces of property that we have that is, it, it could serve a useful purpose, not that a project like this wouldn't need planning board review and neighbor in, you know, it would need all the reviews that all that stuff goes with, but agreeing to, it would be a useful purpose more than it has now and allow development of that vacant land that could fit another piece of our housing needs, which is some of this kind of, but I, but downside, it puts it back on the tax rolls and it, and it accesses housing, I, you know, unless there was a, a lot of neighborhood negative about, but this, these aren't, these are nice developments, they're, you know, they're, um, they're not low-income housing per se in terms of subsidized housing, the only subsidy is in the construction of the property, not in the rents that are charged once it's constructed, so, um, I, I think that, I mean, I don't, it's not big enough to build anything on, it's just, it was an access to uh, to create a connection to a street that's never gonna be built because we don't have it anymore.
I tend to, I tend to lean towards what, what Ed was saying, especially with the amount of time that we have to get this set up, that's for me the biggest thing is, I feel this pressure, this rush to, we have to do this, like, we have to get this, and I don't, I, I don't think we need to rush into that, this stuff, so I'm, I lean where, where Ed leans too.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just say to answer Dan's question a little bit more, um, if you look at map twenty-nine, uh, there are two large lots, they aren't for sale, but who knows? Um, that are above Larry Wall's lot where, where Penquess is looking, uh, lot twenty, uh, sorry, ninety-six and ninety-six dash one. And above those is the Pond Street extension that runs behind Wendell. So the only reason I mention all this is because uh, I'm certainly not against giving away lot ninety-eight, but maybe there's a better way to do it, maybe make it um, an easement or something, because we could potentially see development on those other lots back there, and there's not a lot of good access to those, um, so that could be a good access point to those, should somebody wanna develop those, and they are large wooded lots that could be something good down the road.
Paul?
Uh, just a, a quick question, Sue, you mentioned they're looking at several properties in Buck Sport, did they give you any specifics on any other properties that they're looking at?
It was two other areas, this is the primary one, the second was the idea of, um, Park Street. That area there, um, and that is, uh, for the purposes of access to services and for an older population, that's just a bit more removed than the one that's before Nicholson Avenue, and that's, but those were the two areas that they spoke to Luke about.
Sure, okay, yeah, I, I think I'm in line with Counselor Ormsby, Councilor Ormsby and Rankin, I have no philosophical opposition to that, you know, that easement, I obviously wanna see the plan and all of that, but there's nothing on the table that makes me against it, so.
Anybody else have anything? Ed?
Uh, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd really like to point out that, um, even if we don't take one of these opportunities proposed to us on twenty-seven Maine, we really need to stress on Rich that he doesn't need to like, you know, go above and beyond what he's already doing to make this happen, cause these didn't happen. We've sat on this so long, he, he can do what he's doing and not stress about it. Something will come along that we like, that suits our needs.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I guess as part of that discussion, I, I, I think it, it begs the question probably is to any guidance that the council could provide on that front, I mean, I think we, we've talked around this a little bit in terms of, um, you know, what we want to see there, um, and I think we, we've even I'm kind of wondering, I, I, I've heard Counselor Morrison say how he feels about it, but in terms of the rest of the council, I, I, I haven't heard a, any particular direction that anyone's either leaning towards or, or against, and I think maybe if, you know, if we have a, some sort of long-term vision for twenty-seven Main Street, it might be time to say what that is. It might be, and I'm not saying narrow, narrow it down to it needs to be a bank or it needs, but is it gonna be commercial? Is it gonna be residential? What, what direction does this council wanna go?
I know, I'm
Oh, go ahead, Ed, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm inclined to think, uh, commercial with, you know, possibly some, a few residential on the second or third level, whatever may be, but primarily if we're giving it up, I'd like to see a hundred percent tax reimbursement and I'd like to see a commercial, cause that fits a Main Street, but that's my thought.
So we have, we have no proposals for anything.
Right.
I, 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 I think Danny said it and, and, and I think everybody's mentioned it, we have, we have nothing to jump into, uh, we, there's no decision to make until we get a true plan, um, I don't think we can make a decision, you know, if somebody comes along on twenty-seven Main Street and wants to, and, and has this great plan that, that incorporates two other lots, cause they bought those and, and a whole bunch of housing projects, I think we're remiss if we don't at least look at it. Um, and, and, and if we, if we, if we pigeonhole ourselves and tie ourselves up to say, no, we're gonna go commercial, um, then we may, just by conversation, dissuade people from looking at that for those reasons. Um, I, 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 I think if we leave it all open and, and, and address the, the proposals as they come, cause, because I think it is actively being looked at by different proposals, but if, if we, if we rate off the cuff, say, no, we don't want, we don't want this, um, are we discouraging what we may not know what we want? I don't know if that makes any sense. So I think until, you know, until we get firm proposals, even, even on the other lot over there with, with the right-of-way, you know, um, I, I don't see us making any decision here tonight because we really don't have any decision to make, um, I think it's a discussion point, but until somebody comes forward and, and, and truly puts something in front of us, um, I, it, it, sometimes it's a dangerous game to, to, to speculate and, and maybe drive other folks away, I mean, we were pretty close, if, if some of us remember, to tearing Wilson Hall down without having, you know, um, having, having somebody come forward with an idea, cause we had tossed some things around that we didn't wanna do, we thought. So I, I would just caution, I would just caution us to be careful not to tie ourselves into too tight a hole, um, until we actually see some proposals that we can, then we can, then we can yea or nay on. Um, I think, I think it's a safer bet that way to, to actually see something and go that direction. Sue?
Okay, um, the only reason I ask for some sort of a, if they, they can't make a proposal to if they don't have an access that's gonna be allowed through that, and so in order for, for Penquess to consider that lot, they have to know if the council leaned towards allowing the use of that easement, even if those are shared use, allowing that as an access to that lot or not in order to, um, be able to do the other work that they do, because if they, you know, that, they know that if they don't have that access, that they're, they can't do that project from that site, and so the, the question is whether the, yes, see a proposal, yes, but if the council is prone towards allowing the use of that access for access to those lots, whether it be the walls or the other ones.
I would, I would, I would say that we don't have any affinity against it because we haven't had any reason not to. Again, I, I don't wanna say yes, and then there's somebody else that's sitting on the wings, but I don't think there's anybody here that would say, no, bring us something and let us look at it. Um, and, and if I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but I, from what I've heard for everything, I, I think we're open to any ideas. I just don't think anybody wants to sign on a dotted line tonight for a project that we don't, that we haven't seen.
Penquess came to the council at the next meeting and said, this is what we're proposing to do, this is how many, this is what it was, the basic outline, um, that, that would be the next step for them, because that, they would tell you what their project is gonna be, how many it's gonna have, what it's, you know, what their proposal is, understanding that for them, that, that initial thing is, is just the beginning to a whole lot of, a whole lot more work, which is site assessment and all that kind of things, the housing study, all that, um, that kind of thing, but the, I, I guess all I'm saying is there has to be a path to somebody if they're looking to use it, to get that without a final product, cause they can't have a final product unless they can get some sort of council agreement that it's, that that access is possible.
If, if you're looking for a straw poll, we could take a straw poll, I guess, to see is there anybody against us looking at proposals for property that we own, I, I mean, does that, I, I don't know of a better way to put it.
Well, no, that's what I, and that's all I'm asking for, is it, is there, is there anyone or, or, or a majority who think that, that allowing that access to be used for something other than us, which is basically what you know, is a possibility.
Can I add?
Mark?
Marcus.
Um, I've been on that lot, it's, it's all ledge, it really has no value um, that I could see besides, so I don't see any issue with, you know, giving them a green light to, to move forward and, and talk to them, personally, I don't.
Is there anybody that has any heartburn with, you know, them coming to the next council meeting and, and, and asking us that, that, that's gonna throw them for a loop of all of a sudden, I'm seeing a lot of heads go, no, no issues, so.
No issue.
Okay.
No issue.
Does, does that help Sue?
That helps a lot, thank you.
Okay, all right, and I, and I think for the twenty-seven Main Street piece, um, again, if we, if we keep our eyes wide open on that, but with the understanding that there is a direction I think that we wanna go with, but until we see something, I think we're hard-pressed to say yes or no, um, without, without, you know, accepting any type of offer that comes in, so. Jim?
Uh, I hear, I hear a lot of, uh, talk about the issue of accessibility, uh, location closer to the markets, closer to the downtown area, um, isn't this a problem that could possibly be, uh, remedied through a better transportation system of some sort?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely, Jim. More than part of one day a week, yes, it absolutely could be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does that give you some direction there Sue for that one?
That does, and I guess that in terms of a housing study, um, I was gonna ask to put out on RFP, I, I would wait and see if Penquess is coming to the next, because it would be much more cost-effective if they did that to, um, share that cost than it would be for us to just do one on our own, I, I mean, it's the same information, it would just be a, a broader scope, and if we, we're able to get that without two mobilizations, I think that it would be, but I do think it's important that regardless of where we, that, that we do that. It's been a long, long time since one was done that comprehensively looked at where we were in terms of housing.
Okay, um, I am remiss under item five, review correspondence, um, the town manager did send us some correspondence, um, through email, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see it. Um, if it's something that, um, we, we want, we can put it on the next agenda and a discussion item to look, to talk about. Um, it was, uh, was eighteen sixty-one, state rule forty-six. Um, there was, there was a correspondence, I gave everybody, so I would suggest we put it under the next, on the next council meeting, um, just to have a discussion to go over that, if that's okay with everybody. Thank you. Um, back to discussion, as we have solar RFP updated info.
Um, I withdrew the RFP, um, and you saw the articles that started coming out in regard to not just our substation, but substations all over the place and the cost of access, and now miraculously, they've found another cheaper way to provide that, I read today, but it still is supposed to drive up the cost on a lot of these projects, because while it's less expensive than the Brazilians, they said it's still a lot, and it still doesn't address the how much of the capacity of the one here in Buck Sport is used, that I can only find out by um, doing a pre-application, which is a, not a two-minute project. So with to do that, we'll be doing the pre-application to see sort of where we would stand if we, um, made application, because the alternative is to make such a small project that it, it's not worthwhile to consider on that site, the, from a landfill, so it's withdrawn until the pre-application information is submitted and have gotten a response from CMP on capacity.
Any questions?
Uh, uh, I have one, please.
Jim?
Uh, are, are there any other alternative uses for that piece of land? Or has anybody put a study into that, see what would be uh, a good use for it, I, I realize it's a capped, uh, dump or, or whatever you wanna call it, disposal area. Does anyone know if there's any chance that there is another use for it, that we could utilize it for something different, or, or have we looked into it, or has anybody looked into it, or what do we know about that?
In my experience, um, capped landfills are not subject to any kind of construction that, that puts buildings or those kind of things, any of that kind of thing. And many aren't okay for even solar installations because of the type of cap that's constructed on top of them, ours was constructed that would allow the installation of solar infrastructure, but not all our, um, the, one of the reasons, Jim, that there, that this is the use for any that can be is cause there's, you can't build anything on it, you can't grow anything on it, you can't, you know, it, it's, it, it isn't useful, um, but we have monitoring wells on it that have to be tested on an ongoing basis, it, it's it's one of the only things that you can put on a site like that, that provides some sort of financial positive impact to the town, um, I, I'm happy to check with DEP if there's anything else that they license for them, but I, I've never heard of anything beyond this. But I'll check.
Chance to say the precedent, would, would, would this project, this solar project, would it, uh, provide any jobs for citizens of the town?
The way that we had set up the RFP, the idea was not that the town was looking to be a community provider and, and sell electricity or to do it that, we were looking simply to lease this, uh, land to a developer who installed solar and then, um, they sold the electricity to whomever that they wished to, so the only um, jobs resulting from this would be whoever constructed the facility, and that's true for most, all of these solar projects, is that the jobs are, are connected to the construction and there's not a lot of maintenance and that kind of stuff, other than mowing the grass and making sure everything stays plugged in and all those kind of things on an ongoing basis.
My next question would be, would this project in any way cause for any tax relief for the property tax people in the town?
The, the lease would provide revenue to the town and the personal property tax on the solar equipment would provide property tax, I, I don't, I don't have a, a dollar number that, for that, but um, business, location, commercial and industrial valuation absorbs costs that would otherwise be paid by residential tax payers.
So we should see some relief as taxpayers. We should see some relief on it.
It would help. It, it would increase our business presence and reduce the, the, the business side of our valuation would increase, reducing the the residential burden. That's what, when business goes up, residential goes down.
Ed, do you have something?
Yeah, I just, Sue, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think last year when we did a solar committee meeting, all I could find for communities in Maine and around the country was not profitable ventures. It was like dog parks. I think there was a couple butterfly parks, beehive farms, things like that, just general lawn type deals. That's all I could find researching.
I just looked up my notes from that and that's what I have, that's what I have down to is cross pollinator and so bees, butterfly you could areas for those and then some recreational parks like dog parks and.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Main Street Bucksport Annual Report. Brooke, I think Brooke is on with us.
I am on. Do you hear me?
We do. Yep.
Oh, great. I don't see myself.
Are you back in the state? Are you guys back in the state of Maine or?
Yeah, yeah, we're home and on different floors of the house. I just had to convince the almost teenager to turn off her video because we are stretching the widths of our broadband. I, uh, thank you for taking this time. I had sent you all just a brief written annual report of the work that we did last year, which, you know, like everyone, was altered and unexpected. And, you know, we did our best to pivot in the face of unexpected challenges. So, you know, a lot of the work that we've done in this last year has been focused around the, the Bucks program, which has been really successful. And I think, well, I know, because we've heard, really helpful to a lot of the small business owners in town. And that's thanks definitely in part to the amount that the council has appropriated to us. So we raised about sixteen, between sixteen and seventeen thousand dollars, which has then been matched by people buying bucks to spend locally. The latest round of them expires at the end of March. So assuming they're all spent, which probably they won't be, but close to them, we'll be, we'll be looking at, you know, thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars that will be pumped into the local economy. But also we've done a lot of the same stuff that we've continued to do. And I actually think this last year has, because of the challenges that the businesses have faced, has allowed us to work more closely with Rich, who I, I think is not here tonight. But, you know, early in the pandemic, Rich and I worked together to create a survey to send to every business in Bucksport. We actually did this twice to really just gauge like what they needed, what they knew about the help that was available at that point. To just try to gauge how to best help them and then follow it up on that by offering webinars and reaching out one-on-one to business owners in order to connect them with resources that it was clear that they needed. Small businesses, as we all know, are taking a hit, although in some cases in Bucksport, they're doing okay. And it's great to see how local people have showed up really to, to help support the businesses that are in our, in our town. We continue to do a lot of the other kind of ongoing events and programs that we do, coffee hours and networking with businesses. This is the second year that we produced a print brochure that promotes downtown Bucksport that we work with the main tourism association to distribute those to all of the rest stops along the main turnpike. So that kind of work, you know, continued on and but, you know, like for every organization, it's been a challenge. The events that we would typically do that are both important, I think, to the community, but also typically give us revenue were canceled, like everything. We're working now to try to think about how that looks for this coming year and what's possible. You know, it's really hard to make decisions in this moment. There's just so much that's unknown. And, and, you know, and at the same time, the organization itself is undergoing a change. So after six years, I'm going to be leaving this position in just a, a couple of months. And the board is going to be hiring a new director to carry out the mission and, and do the work. So lots of changes, lots of trying to be adaptive to what's going on. And, um, you know, and for me, it's been really gratifying to do this work. And I, I guess I just also wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all for the support that you've provided to the organization over these past few years. This is likely my last meeting with you all. So I'm, I'm happy to answer questions about the report or about anything else or to comment on any other aspect of the work that we've done.
Thanks. Any questions for Brooke?
No questions. Just thank you for all of your efforts, Brooke. And I think this year, despite everything that happened, I think the Bucks Bucks program was a, uh, was a success and, and, and did everything it, it intended to do. And it was a great collaborative effort. So thank you for, for that and for being helpful.
I will echo that also. Thank you for all the work that you've done and helping us to understand what the whole process has been. At times, it's, when we started out, I think we were all trying to figure out what we were doing. And you, uh, you guided us through to, to, to get us to where we're at today and then, and having really good programming and stuff. So thank you for that.
I also appreciate that. I appreciate that. Yeah. Thank you both. It's very kind of you to say. It's been a pleasure to do. And I'm not going anywhere. I live here. So I'm happy to, um, you know, continue to, to play my part. But I'm basically just going back to being a librarian. Which is really what I am and am trained to be. But it has been fabulous. And, you know, there is a really solid group of board members and volunteers who are committed to the projects and the work that we've done and who are working with Sue and Rich and, and some of you to really kind of try to solidify the relationship between the Main Street program and the town and how everybody can work together most effectively. And I think that's great and important work and that everybody essentially shares the same goals. And so it will be exciting to see what happens next and I'm ready to hand it off.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Brooke.
Thank you. Thank you all. I can't see myself at all. So I have no idea what's happening here. But I'm hopeful that I can hang out somehow.
All right. The next item on the agenda is, uh, the discussion, Spring Fountain Dangerous Buildings Discussion. I see Luke, I see Sue, I see the chief. I assume that everybody has a piece of this or?
Luke will introduce this, where we are. Public Safety Director Gagan has some input. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that come from the sort of where do we go from here thing. But Luke is the one that is.
Okay. So basically this is a delicate situation, but we have visited the property. We've done thorough inspection and it's not good. It's, uh, electrical issues, plumbing issues. Furnace hasn't been serviced in years and doesn't work. So they're all using space heaters to heat their rooms. The space heaters are not rated and if they tip over, they don't turn off. Fire alarm control panel is not working properly. Smoke detectors don't work if they're even there. Smoke detectors aren't the right type anyways. They're not hardwired and they're not, uh, not like the ten-year type that the fire department gave out this couple of years back, you know, the, they have a ten-year battery in them. That's one of the acceptable types, but they're not. They're just the type that you put a nine-volt battery in and stick it on the wall and hope that it works. Which is better than nothing, but most of them had no battery in them or if it did have a battery, it was dead. Most of the people there are smoking in the rooms, which just compounds the problems. And then there's the structural issues and mold issues and all that kind of thing. But basically, we've, we've tried to work with them for a couple of years now. Even though some of the people that, that work there are trying, they don't have the knowledge or the skill to do what needs to be done. And they can't get financial backing from the owners to get professionals in there to do these things. So, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing pipes held together with duct tape or no pipe under a sink at all, just a five gallon bucket. And when it gets full from their bathroom sink, then they dump it in the tub or, you know, this kind of thing. It's, it's really sketchy and, and really dangerous. And it's not really, to me, a matter of if there's a fire, it's a matter of when it happens. And if it happens, it could be really bad. You'd like to think that since they each have their own exit, it's a better situation than a hotel. But even still, not all the people that are there are able to move quickly and and, and are, you know, some of them have disabilities. So it could be, it could be bad. So we have once again turned to the fire marshal and the fire marshal has made it very clear that they don't do enforcement. They do plan review and will help you evaluate a proposed project and determine if it's going to be up to code. But if something that's already built is not up to code, they don't seem to want to step in and help. The most they could do is fine them, which does nothing for us. They already can't pay their bills. We don't need to give them more. So what we're looking at as a, as a proposal is, is listing the building as a dangerous building. What that does is allows us to to put an order to vacate on. Now, in, in order to do that process, we have to have a hearing. And the hearing would be with you folks. Uh, you would be kind of the judge and jury. The town's lawyer and myself would present our case and they would have a chance to defend themselves and present their case. And you guys would determine whether we should move forward and li- label it a, a dangerous building. If we move forward with this, uh, the lawyer would explain everything to you folks about how it all works, how the process works, what your responsibility is, what we can and can't do. You have some options. You're allowed to hear from the public if you want, or you can have it be not from the public. You just hear from us and hear from them. Or their lawyers and our lawyers, whatever it be. In the end, you make a determination of whether, whether, um, I'm correct in labeling it a dangerous building, whether you think that's the right way to go. If that's the way you want to go, which is what I'm recommending, then I spoke with the lawyer today. Uh, he's finished all his deed research and title searches and, and whatnot to make sure that he can send notice to all the proper people. The banks would be notified, any lien holder, whatever, um, as well as obviously the owners. He thinks that that service could take some time, especially the owners, since they're in New Jersey. And he wants to make sure that there's plenty of time for that service to take place. So he recommends that we try and do it at the April eighth council meeting. If that's acceptable to you all, then we would move forward with getting that notice prepared. And then the lawyer would have the sheriff department and the different areas serve those papers. I'm not sure if I'm remembering everything. Is, are there any questions about how this works or what we're doing or why?
So Luke, if we, if we follow through with this, the hearing would be on the eighth or did I misunderstand that?
That is correct. If, if, if you, I guess, I, I guess you gotta kind of take a vote tonight as to whether you want to move forward with this. If you do, then we would schedule the hearing for the, the eighth, unless that date doesn't work for you all. And at that time, if we list a, a dangerous building, we could place a order to vacate. And we could set, you know, we could give them two weeks or we could give them thirty days or we could do whatever. In the meantime, if you guys move forward tonight and say, yes, we're going to have this hearing on the eighth, we, the department heads are going to try and gather resources and come up with a plan for how to help these, these people. Some of these people are, are really good people that are just really down on their luck and they're, this is the best place they have to go. And we don't want them to be out on their can on the sidewalk, but we also don't want to and are responsible to find them housing. But we do want to help them. So we're going to meet as a group and try and put together a list of, of resources and, and talk to different groups and agencies and see how we can help. You know, we're trying to keep them safe and it doesn't do any good to just throw them on the sidewalk. That just creates a different problem. So. Any other questions?
Luke, can this eventually end up in the court system through appeals and everything else? Or is this a done deal with us? I know the answer, but I just want to make sure you tell me the answer.
Well, the, the lawyer said that we can, um, they can appeal. It would be like an administrative appeal. So it would be all documentation that would be submitted to the superior court. And the superior court would look at it and basically determine if everything was done right. They're really not going to overturn our decision. That's really inconsequential to them. It's just a matter of procedure. Did we follow all the steps? Did we do everything right? And regardless of whether they appeal or not, our order to vacate would be effective and immediate. Their appeal wouldn't put a hold on that or anything like that. So if that appeal process takes eight months, it doesn't matter. And then I followed up my, that question with the lawyer with what happens if for some reason they won the appeal after eight months? And we'd ordered it to vacate, would we be responsible for lost income or anything like that? And he said, absolutely not. We're not, that's not how that works. If they did overturn our appeal, it would be because of a procedural thing. And it would basically come back to us to do it again and do it correctly this time. It wouldn't be saying, oh, no, we, the superior court, think the building is safe. It, it's not going to be like that. It would just be a procedural thing, which is why we have the lawyer. And I think he's, he knows his stuff and he'll make sure we do it right.
Could we hear, uh, could we hear a little bit from, um, Public Safety Director Gagan? Or is Chief Denning there, uh, Deputy Chief Denning there too, Sean?
Yes, he is. Deputy Chief Denning is here.
Yes, he is, deputy chief Denning is here with me also. Um just a reminder that this is a situation that's been going on for a couple of years now. Um I reviewed the folder that I've got on it. There are indications and reports in here from when Jeff Hammond worked he worked here and was out there, so this isn't something new. It is something that's been going on for some time. We have uh within the last twenty four to forty eight hours, we've taken complaints of no heat, no electricity in buildings up there. It's something that goes on on a regular basis. And we're really looking from a public safety aspect, we're looking at life safety issues, not only for the people that are living there, but for the people and that work for me that are gonna have to respond there. Um so you know, we, some of the things that have gone on up there, we have people heating their apartments with space heaters, we have them heating with ovens, we have them heating with blow dryers, things of that nature that that are really life safety issues and hazardous to to everybody living there, including the building, the structure and the people that that live there, so. Um it's not something that's just started, it's been going on for some time, I I do think that there have the fire marshal, as Luke explained it very well from beginning to end, the fire marshal has been there. There've been violations, some of them have been fixed a little bit here and there, but not a hundred percent. Um and at this point, I I think from what the fire marshal has said, it's really up to the town to move forward civilly um to take care of the situation at hand.
Thanks, Sean. Anybody have any questions? Is there anybody opposed to not going forward with this step? Seeing none, Sue?
You could um when we get down to set public hearings and hold public hearings, if you were to set a public hearing for um or set a dangerous building hearing for the Spring Fountain for April eighth, it would be appropriate, that would allow our attorney to prepare that paperwork and get it posted if you just set that date down further here on the agenda. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention is that um it this really is about the life safety issues of of as um public safety director Gagan and Luke talked about both for the people who live there and the people who have to respond, because that's the you know, the two A M nightmares when the tone goes off is that it's gonna be that facility and there's so many people there living in such compromised surroundings that it's um that has the potential to be a very, very bad scene if something happened there, so.
So so Sue, I I I have a question, i- is there not, is there not some emergency and maybe Luke or or Sean can answer this, is there not some emergency doctrine procedure that we can take where where it's such a dangerous situation that 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 we can force?
This is the fastest way. This is the absolute fastest way, yeah.
We asked that question, it that is this and and that it is the it is the fastest way danger. The only other way is through an eighty K land use violation, you know, code. But the courts aren't even hearing those now because of COVID. And so that isn't an option for us right now, the the fastest one we have is this one.
All right, thank you.
Do we know how many people are are currently in there?
Sean, would you say that thirty five to forty rooms are rented?
Yeah, I'm thinking forty plus or minus forty, yeah.
Rooms, but there there's more than one person in many of those rooms.
Right, uh some rooms have a lot of people in them, from what I understand. Yeah, and whenever, we're sure how many are in there.
All right.
We're we're talking about a considerable number of people here.
Okay. All right, we'll uh we'll address that when we get down proper space in the agenda, everybody okay? Everybody outside on that? Okay.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, Luke, thank you, chief. Next item are agenda items. Uh first is agenda resolve twenty twenty one dash forty one to approve the twenty one twenty two budget workshop schedule, everybody has a copy of it starting uh April first, I believe it was. Oh, the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There are motion to second, any questions? Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy mayor Bistonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Uh the next item is resolve twenty twenty one forty two to name the Bucksport Performing Arts Center the Peter D. Klein Auditorium, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. There are motion to second. Uh Paul, you you were on this committee, weren't you? Oh, Kathy, I'm sorry.
You're muted.
You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry about that, can I make a comment?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I was gonna go with Paul, I know he was on the committee, but go ahead, certainly.
No, D, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I just have a written form here, I want to explain um the reason that I'm voting no for this resolve twenty twenty one forty two changing the Bucksport Performing Arts Center to Peter D. Klein Auditorium. In no way am I taking away from Peter D. Klein the contributions of twenty five years as drama coach, director and teacher. I would rather have seen a dedication plaque with his picture be hung in the entrance to the Bucksport Performing Arts Center. There was a committee of founding citizens called Bucksport Area Cultural Arts Society that did fundraising and in the end the town of Bucksport contributed funds to make the Bucksport Performing Arts Center the size it is today. I feel the name should be kept the same and make this a dedication plaque. I feel by leaving it, the Bucksport Performing Arts Center shows the town's commitment to performing arts whereas the name Peter D. Klein Auditorium to outside people coming to town would not recognize this as a performing arts center, but rather an auditorium. As I said, I have no concerns in dedicating the Bucksport Performing Arts Center to Peter D. Klein with a plaque in recognition of his contributions to the performing arts. That's all I have, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I would just add the from what was discussed in the committee and and maybe this will help clear some of it up. I in the co- in the committee, the the conversation was that the auditorium itself would be named the Peter D. Klein Auditorium, but that the Performing Arts St- Center would stay the the complex itself would be, would remain the Bucksport Performing Arts Center, the signage would reflect that as well. So for example, driving up um the conversation was right now, it says in very nice letters, but I think Bucksport Performing Arts Center, and then underneath that it would say Peter um D. Klein Auditorium. Um because that Kathy, I don't think Kathy was the only one that had that concern. Um I don't know if that assuages Kathy's concern or not, but uh it um that was a a conversation. And so I don't know i- if the if the resolve needs to be amended, we can certainly do that, but that was the conversation in the committee.
Yeah, that's was a big concern I had, thank you for explaining that, Paul.
Yep, I think probably um uh Mr. Klein would probably agree with you. Um uh he was on the building committee uh back in the day and um uh and um he probably would be inclined to agree with you, Kathy, so I just wanted to clear that up.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Would it help if the resolve was to support the naming of the auditorium at the Bucksport Performing Arts Center, the Peter D. Klein Auditorium? Would that would that amendment to the how the resolve is worded, Kathy, a- addressed the concern about that if it was to the name the auditorium, the Peter D. Klein au- auditorium at the Bucksport Performing Arts Center? Would that address?
That would make me feel better, yes, thank you.
I happen to agree with every one of 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 Counselor Downs's points in terms of the familiarity of it, et cetera, et cetera, and I think it just um the the naming of the auditorium will um, there will be signage, et cetera uh.
So if we modify this resolve to support the naming of the auditorium at the Bucksport Performing Arts Center, the Peter D. Klein Auditorium um would that language change throughout this?
At least it does for me, I I Counselor Ormsby and Rankin, we're also on the committee, I ju- as long as they're, it's okay with them too, it certainly is okay with me.
Yeah, I I agree with that, I think that's probably good to put in the resolve that way. Um cause I think that was original intent of the of the committee.
I'm confident.
Just a quick, just a quick question, um I don't know when this was there a dedication planned or something, do you know, Paul, that was there anything planned?
Uh no, just because of the circumstances of the pandemic, nothing concrete right now, but there there the 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 R S U um indicated that they would be working that out and also handling the signage and all of that.
I I would I would just assume see a cleaner resolve come back and not try to muddle through this, or maybe the next meeting, we have a better resolve, Sue?
I absolutely, I will amend it if it's okay with every place where it talks about naming the performing, it will say naming the auditorium at the Bucksport Performing Arts Center all the way down through, and I'll bring that back for the next council meeting.
I believe that was the intent that everybody was looking for anyway, correct?
Thank you.
Jake, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Well, at 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 the president has been so moved and seconded, I think we have to take a vote.
We do, we do, yeah, 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 we do, we do. Jake? Anything, I'm sorry, anything else? Jake, please?
Counselor Eastman?
Uh decline.
Counselor Morrison?
I don't approve.
Uh deputy mayor Bistonette?
Decline.
Mayor Stewart?
Not approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Not approve.
Counselor Downs?
Not approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Not approve.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, folks. Uh next item is resolve twenty twenty one forty three to approve hiring all of our associates to perform a sewer facility flow user evaluation and rate review with forty five hundred dollars to be paid for the sewer contingency. Sue, uh actually first, let's uh council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to second, Sue?
Um in two thousand eight, the town approved its sewer ordinance and um in it, it had a certain way that um multifamily units would be assessed for sewer rates and it was based on um information from flows and users at that time. And so the council adopted it at that time, but they never implemented it. It never got billed the way, the bills were never set up for multi- multifamily cross properties across the board, the way it was outlined in the ordinance. And this came to my attention recently because the the only thing we ever talked about when when I came here, the rate had changed was whether the rate that we were charging um was sufficient to pay the bills at the sewer treatment plant, and it has. But what was adopted in two thousand eight and never implemented um is on the books as the way it's supposed to have been done and I contacted former major, former manager Roger Raymond to understand why it didn't get implemented and it was related to the fact that the council at the time adopted the sewer ordinance, but didn't carry that part out because they wanted to wait to see if there was gonna be a new facility constructed and if there was that that would be the time that they would do it. And Mr. Raymond indicated that he had spoken to um Mr. Bennett, the next manager after him, explaining to him that this hadn't been done and but he also spoke to Mr. Goodine um and bottom line, nothing, it didn't get done. And so at this point, we have a a new treatment plant that's been online for a couple of years. We've lost an account that was twenty five percent of our flow at the time, the mill, because at the time this was developed, the mill was in place. And in order to understand that what's in that ordinance is the right thing to apply to what we're doing right now, we need data that says what our flows are, what our equivalent users are based on those flows. Um and then work through whether what we're are supposed to be doing is equitable and then doing it. Because now that I know that we're not following the ordinance in terms of how we treat all multi-unit, we can't just let it sit there, we we need to address this and the only way to address it is to have good data so that we can see what what we actually should be doing um as opposed to perhaps what we are. So in order to do that, I need an engineer to do that evaluation of flow study and rates and uh not user, number of users, the amount of flows, the equivalent number of users that that translates to, and then the impact to our sewer is if we apply that to what our ordinance says we should be doing, which we're not.
Questions?
Yeah, I have.
Jim?
Uh how how is this work done? What 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 does this work entail? How are they going to do this? This study? Uh they're just gonna collect daily data or what exactly are they gonna be doing?
They're going to be um taking the the sewer flows that our treatment facility is generates over the course of the year and uh examining that compared to with our current user structure, which is not the same user structure we had before. And that results in a determination of equivalent users, if you have you know, depending on that use or 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 the volume of use, but it's it's a at the time, according to Mr. Raymond, at the ti- at the time, this one that's in the ordinance right now was developed, the town did exactly what I'm proposing you do now, which is have an engineer evaluate the use of the flow um and the costs of operation of the system to determine if that if the rate structure that we have set up is fair and equitable. Um one of the big issues is that that we're not treating all multi-unit residences the same and haven't been since, well, since forever, because this ordinance was two thousand eight and it it's not how it's was set up then and that's how it was left. And so that's what they do, is they take flows, users, the cost of operation of the system and tell us what the impact of this rate structure is on on where our numbers would end up if we follow our ordinance and if we need to amend the ordinance, at the very least, we're going to need to level things out because we're charging people differently for the same service and I I'm not comfortable just saying that we'll change it to some arbitrary number without understanding what where that number came from or or what generates it. So that's the kind of information that they would be providing the council so that we could know what, where we end up if we start doing what our ordinance says.
Sue, are we opening ourselves up to any type of lawsuit or or people coming back and saying, look, I I was Sue, are we opening ourselves up to any type of lawsuit or, or people coming back and saying, look, I, I was charged one thing and obviously I was being charged something wrong? Are we looking at a, a rebate or anything like that?
No, the, the, I haven't changed a thing. The town's been billing, the town has been billing like this since, since it's had a sewer system. It, but, but it didn't do was change back in two thousand eight. The, the truth is that, that the town in not doing that undercharged a, a whole lot of multifamily units compared to what the ordinance said. And we're certainly not going to go knock on anybody's door and say, we forgot to bill you for this for the last thirteen years. I'm not going to do that. That is for sure. But, um, that's one of the, one of the bigger problems.
Danny? So, which ultimately, if we were charging the multi-unit to what they were supposed to be charging, it could, after the study, lower, potentially lower the sewer rates in town.
It could.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I'm not, I, I don't know. The, the, the problem Danny is I don't know the answer, but it involves, you know, the, how many multifamily units do we have now? You know, all of those kinds of questions and, um, the fact that we're not billing them all the same is the issue. I'm sorry to bring you these kinds of things. This, this feels like nine seventeen River Road to me, but that was from the nineteen eighties and this from was two thousand eight. But now that I know that it's not right, we can't just leave it not right. We need to address the fact that it's not right.
Anything else? We have a motion to second, Jake?
Uh, Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Uh, Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
And Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Next item is resolved twenty twenty-one forty-four to approve the updated mutual aid agreement with Orland Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe you have both documents in front of you, one for Verona Island and one for the Town of Orland. Uh, these have been in effect for several, several years now. I don't know that they're really, um,
Absolutely. Call them black one.
I don't know that they've been reviewed since nineteen ninety-nine. Um, it is something that we recently have looked over, reviewed them. Deputy Chief Winchester, myself have met with Verona, the, two of the selectmen for Verona Island, and I met with a selectman from Orland to go over these to see if they wanted any changes and, and what other things that we thought should be changed also. If you look at the first one, which is Verona Island, um, I apologize, I don't think the highlights come through on the scan, but the changes themselves are really just the effective date amended, amends and supersedes date at the beginning. Uh, Verona did want Island added in after Verona on everything on the document, which we've done, and they have reviewed that. Um, on the second page under number two, that covers the bridges, we did add in the Edward Tagan Bucksport Verona Island Bridge and the Knox Scott Narrows Bridge. And I think that was it, really for changes. And the only other thing that would be changed, and that would be the date, uh, if approved, year time. The Orland Mutual Aid Agreement, uh, the same thing, the dates at the beginning in the, in the first block. And the only other change for this on the second page is number six. And it covers the attendance for the Bucksport ambulance service. Um, of course, we cover Orland. And this was not in this agreement from the beginning. Um, and at the time, they could not, for some reason, come to an agreement for us to go to Orland in emergency situations where there was no law enforcement available, that our ambulance service was in a time of need in an emergency. Uh, they just couldn't agree upon it. So it did not go in. It went into the one in Verona, but it did not go to the one in Orland. So we did add that number six to the second page, as I said. I met with, um, the selectman over there, Mr. Rankin. We discussed it. Both of these towns have brought the potential changes to their boards and have in fact approved them. So bringing these forward to the town council tonight, to see if it would approve the changes to these two.
Thank you. Um, resolve twenty twenty-one forty-four was for Orland. Uh, do we have a motion yet? Is there a motion please? Or how would the council proceed?
Second.
Have motion to second. Counselor, have any questions? Keith, the only question I have is on the Verona Island one where the bridge, the Knox Scott Narrows goes halfway across. Do we have to worry about anything with Waldo County?
Um, we've talked about that. Uh, Deputy Chief Winchester and myself have actually talked about, um, discussing that with Waldo County and actually talking with, uh, Chief, Chair of Morton, Knox Scott County for Orienton, because we have the whole line on the, the backside of town here that, that we could have to go into too. So it's not, it's something that the bridges, it does have two sides. You're absolutely correct, but we really haven't addressed that. Um, but we talked about talking to Waldo County about it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Resolve twenty twenty-one forty-five to approve the updated mutual aid agreement with Verona Island. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have motion to second. Again, any further questions? Being from Verona Island, I can understand adding the word island. So I appreciate that. Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Motion, uh, approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Thank you, item. Thanks, thanks, Chief.
Actually, just so that the council knows, the agreements themselves, the one on the other side of the bridge would actually be with the Town of Prospect and the one on the other side of Bucksville will be with the Town of Orienton. They're actually with the towns and not with the law enforcement agencies.
Thank you. Item nine is resignations, appointments, assignments and elections. We don't have anything. Item ten is approval of quick claims, discharges and bids. The first one is Ruth Bennett, map six, lot fifty-two, twenty nineteen tax lien. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Have motion to second. Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Next is Stephen L. Scott, map sixteen, lot zero two five, twenty nineteen tax lien. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have motion to second. Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. And we're going to need to have some signatures on those. So, um, we're closed on Monday, correct, Sue?
That's correct.
So if we could get some folks to stop in, uh, first of the week, Tuesday, please. Uh, next item is town manager report, department head reports. Sue?
Thank you. Um, the UMaine talk to the Mitchell Center that I did on Monday went well and is now posted on their website. And as a result of that, Main Biz and the Ellsworth American both did stories this week, um, in their online editions, uh, about that talk and about Bucksport. So it was a week of good press for the community, um, that we didn't have to pay for. So that's a, a positive. The culvert replacement projects on Bucks Mills and Jacob Bucks Pond, we're looking to put out a bid in the fall of this year for construction in twenty twenty-two. The project engineer, um, has recommended that we do that in order to try and get more favorable bids. The bidding, um, in this year is not going well in many large project cases. So he's recommended that we do it in the fall for next year. I will be speaking as part of a webinar for Heart and Soul next week that is making funding available to communities to assist with implementation of that program in interested communities. This is a nationwide webinar, so it's a little more, um, exposure for us, which is not a bad thing. The new fire alarm system is being installed at the town office this week that was approved by the council to replace our, our failed one. It should be completed by Friday. They've been here for the past several days. The failed heater in the public safety police garage has also been replaced. So there, they are heating again as well. A postcard went, uh, out today, went to the post office today that goes out to all Bucksport residents regarding the senior rides program for medical and dental appointments. It really seemed to be the best way to get the information into the hands of the people who need it the most, because many of our seniors are not on a computer or the internet in a way that would allow them to know that we were, we had made that program available for them. So that was one out today. As you've stated, the town office and transfer station will be closed on Monday, um, in observance of President's Day, and the town office will reopen on Tuesday at seven thirty a.m. And I will be having crash bars installed on the three remaining entrance doors at the town office that do not have them. A couple of years ago, we had, uh, one of the downstairs back doors have a crash bar installed for safety reasons, because the little locks at the top, in the case of an emergency or you're supposed to be able to just exit and you can't do that. You have to mess around. And now we have two of those bed boat locks that are failing and are not, they're so original to the building that they're not able to be replaced with the same size mechanism. It would require pretty dramatic adjustment to the door. And so instead of going through that expense, um, um, getting prices for the crash bars on the other three doors so that they're all the same and they're all up to code, so to speak, on safety as well before those last two locks fail. One of them already has and it, it's a problem for us upstairs in the entrance. So that's my report.
Thank you. I saw the voice of the Golden Bucks was back here. Does he ever, Rich, did you want to say something for us or do you have something to report?
Uh, the boys won against Sumner tonight. I'll be broadcasting the game tomorrow for the girls versus Belfast. But, um, yeah, like Sue said, the, um, the fire control panel, it's a good thing we had them in. Uh, one of the smoke detectors downstairs, when they went into the ceiling to get it out, had water in it. There was water damage in a place where there's no water in the building. So they're going to complete the project tomorrow. I'll be with them tomorrow from seven thirty to four. Um, then that project will be wrapped up. The engineers, um, contacted Main Water. These are the engineers, over and associates for the Main Street Walls Project to locate water and sewer. Um, so I'm anticipating that to go out to bid shortly. Uh, the RFQ for the main docks program that we had talked about, uh, that went in today's paper and is on the town's website. The RFP for the fishing pier will be going out, um, next, uh, the twenty-sixth, week of the twenty-sixth. Um, so we'll have that coming back as well. And, uh, just so that the public knows and the council, if you don't already know, on the economic development page on the town's website, I created a broadband page for us that has the plan that was created in two thousand sixteen. It also lists all of the providers in our area and there's also a special tab on there for, uh, low income, uh, internet pricing. One through the government called LifeLock and then through each of the individual, uh, ISPs. So for example, thirty megabytes for fourteen ninety-nine through spectrum for, uh, someone meeting certain income requirements. So for the public and for the council, take a look at that. That's, uh, new stuff. I'm going to continue to do more stuff like that. We have lots of reports. We have lots of stuff that we are doing and we need to get the word out more and I'll make sure that happens.
Thanks, Rich. Any, bear any questions for the town manager or Rich? Appreciate it. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, um, set public hearings or hold public hearings. Uh, I believe we want to set April eighth, was it, as our dangerous building hearing? So we have that during the regular council meeting? Is that at, at seven? Okay.
Yes.
Jake?
There is a liquor license that made your packet. Um, I don't see it on the agenda. It's for Glenn's Place. Um, if you would be willing to, um,
Take up an item not on the agenda?
Yes, if you would, please.
Every request, take an item up, not on the agenda. How would the council like to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
Take a vote on that, please, Jake. Just make sure.
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Uh, Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve. Uh, taking up an item not on the agenda is approval of a liquor license for Glenn's Place. Uh, it's renewal of a license. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Have motion in a second. Any questions, any comments? Chief, you still on? Everything good up there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everything is good.
Hearing done, Jake?
Uh, Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're all set on the hearing on the eighth for the unsafe building. We'll, we'll set that on the agenda. Um, thirteen is discussion items not on the agenda for the council of the public. Anybody from the council have anything? Want to talk about something agenda, Paul?
Uh, really quickly, uh, actually I'll ask this question right now of, on, on the signatures for that license, is there a rush on that or can that wait till Tuesday as well?
Tuesday's good.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to quickly, I know the ta, the town manager already has, but in terms of the fire department's, um, efforts up at Knoxville Apartments several weeks ago, um, just wanted to thank them. Um, it seems like they, that was a, had the potential to be a, a tricky situation and, um, it seems like they did a pretty, a pretty darn good job. So I wanted to thank them. Uh, and also, um, give kudos to our town manager. Um, I had the opportunity to see her presentation um, earlier in the week and she really did a good job. Um, call it free publicity, call it whatever you want. Um, I think one thing that a good administrator does is tells the story of the work that's taken place. And I think she did a really excellent job at doing that. Um, and didn't, uh, certainly told a positive story, uh, but didn't sugarcoat it. Um, you, you know, made sure to mention, you know, since the closure of the mill, some of the things that perhaps um, have been struggles. Um, anyway, if you haven't had a chance to see it, I would encourage you to, um, and I think she really did a good job. So thank you, Sue, for that.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Did we get any comments, Sue, from the telephone or email or anything?
I have nothing from the phone and nothing from the email.
Okay. I'm hearing nothing else. Uh, upcoming public hearings, designation of committee assignments and scheduling committee meetings. I don't believe we have anything we need to schedule other than the, the hearing we've had. So, uh, Mark?
Peter, can we get a wall committee meeting, um, in one of the upcoming meetings?
Wall committee?
I think Rich had mentioned doing that prior to the next I think Rich had mentioned doing that prior to the next council meeting. I was going to, it's an, it, building, it's the wall committee, whatever you wanna call it, that, that, that was.
Baseball wall committee.
That's the one.
Okay. Not, not the walls on Main Street. It's actually the baseball wall. Fair enough. Is that what your question was to add also?
Uh, yes, yeah.
So let's go, uh, six o'clock on the twenty-fifth? That work for everybody?
Yep.
And that will also be broadcast, um, out to the world, so. Anything else that needs to be set up? All right, next item is item fifteen is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.